We call the meeting to order and we'll rise to the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, the role call please.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
And Mayor DeWor.
I am here. Item number two, presentation from the American Water Works Association Michigan section on Lowell winning best tasting water. Michael.
Last Thursday, the city was notified that we won the American Water Works Association Michigan section's 2019 award for best tasting water. Tonight, representatives from the American Water Works Association Michigan section are here to present the award to us. Also, we were going to recognize our three employees who work at the water plant, our superintendent of water, water plant superintendent Brian Van Beelen, water plant operator Todd Phillips, and utility supervisor Ralph Breckin. I'm going to bring Aaron Davenport up to the podium so he can make his award. I don't want the rest of them to come up as well.
Boy, you've already hit the high point, so you don't need to debate. The Michigan section of the American Water Works Association is the local section for the, at this point, international organization that defines the standards and helps shape the rules and regulations that dictate drinking water. At our annual conference, your fine guys here brought the best tasting water in Michigan. They get to represent the section at the international competition in Orlando in June.
Put that trophy in the pitch.
That's right. This is a big deal. It really is. They bested some very good tasting water, some multi-year champions. I know they've been a regional champ many times, first state title. I know Brian has no intention of giving that back to me. The ball. That's fine. I'll come fly away from him. That's why they got me, the biggest guy in the section, so I can secure that when I need to. Happy to answer any questions you have.
What's all along with winning this award?
So, how's the competition go?
Yeah.
So, in the spring, we have our regional meetings. We have five of them. There's one in the U.P., one in Kalamazoo, one in Lebanon, one in Gaylord, and one in Mount Pleasant. They bring a mason jar of their water straight off the plant tap, the stuff that goes to the city, and it gets judged by a gale. They won Mount Pleasant? They won Mount Pleasant, and then our five regional champs come together in the fall at our state conference, and those are the five best of the best. Those are the ones we judge to see who's number one. So, independent panel of judges, three of them, one is a delegate from the AWWA, one is a delegate of the section, and one is typically regulatory, so equal. And we judge on taste, clarity, odor, and taste, clarity, odor, and color. This time, we needed two overtimes to decide. That's how... I tell everybody when they're judging at the state level, you're splitting hairs. These are all outstanding drinking waters. Michigan makes great water. Let's see, we lost one, and we had a three-way tie after the initial tasting, then we lost another in the second, and we basically ended up in a Pepsi challenge. One sip of one, one sip of the other, push the one you like forward best, you name it.
That's right.
Yep.
I can make myself available for that Orlando trip.
You know, and honestly, there's a heritage there. These guys have a lot to live up to. Couple years ago, Ann Arbor was top five on the continent. Last year Cadillac was top five on the continent. When I say that, there were representatives from Mexico and Canada and 26 representative sections in the United States. So, it's a big deal, and they have a lot to live up to. We have a lot of confidence in them.
So do we. Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Congratulations. Questions for anybody? Free water outside for anybody who wants to see.
Yeah, just remember, we calculated this the other day. If you think bottled water is better, just remember this is the best in the state. At a 20-ounce bottle of Dasani, you can get 320 of them for the same cost of the city water. Delivered to your door, safe and tested every day, certified and verified, best in the state.
And no plastic ones?
Nope. Here, here.
Cool. Thanks, guys.
All right, how about now a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeWor.
Yes.
Citizen discussion, item's not on the agenda. Terry's price will sleep.
All right, item five, Lowell business, city income tax update. Mike.
Good evening, Mayor, seat, council. Just updating from our last meeting, we will be having our first informational meeting on Wednesday. Been spending a lot of time putting that presentation package together. Also, we are working on our, some of our, more of our informational pieces that we are going to be getting out to the public. We will be doing another mailer end of the month like we did end of last month. And also, we will be doing some more social media marketing as well. If you recall, when we talked about our original plan, we set aside some funds to do the digital marketing or informational piece for that. Also, one of the important things that we've done in the last few weeks, Dan's going to come up to the podium in a minute, we have been trying, we have been putting a plan in place for if the income tax does pass, as to what streets we would hypothetically would start looking at. There's a lot of different factors that could come into play, but we've spent a lot of time, we've taken the dollar amounts that we would get from the income tax each year, and as we know, it does progressively go up every year. However, costs go up every year as well. But we have a pretty conservative estimate in our plan, and we put a pretty good plan, I think, in place for you to consider. I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and Dan can show you what we've come up with.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I apologize, my high technus isn't following me very well. I'm used to a lot of paper, so handing a few things out today, and I've got a display I'm going to put up. Since coming to Lowell back in the beginning of August, one of the things Mike and I have talked about extensively has been streets and infrastructure and how everything goes together and how we're going to address our situations that we have out there. As you're aware, recently, all the streets in the city of Lowell have been reviewed and evaluated with the street surfaces being graded under the PESR rating system. For those of you that don't remember, the PESR rating system is a 10-point, or a 10-numbered scale that evaluates the surface from 10 being good to one being poor or totally worn out. And if you recall, our reviews of that, the city has fallen into about 91%, fallen to the fair or poor category. If you look at the map that came with your packet, you can see how the streets are laid out, and there's a lot of red and a little yellow, and very, very little green. So, those are the streets that we're looking at, and basically, our whole system. Finding the problem with the streets is pretty easy, it's pretty visible. But that's just one part of the overall plan. We also are taking into account the infrastructure beneath the streets. If you recall, the city's already performed a water reliability study that shows the areas of concern that need to be addressed, and we're just about finishing up with the SAW grant, which basically has done the same thing with our sanitary storm sewers, is to come up with a plan to fix those utilities. Utilities are all under the street. It doesn't make any sense at all to fix the street if you aren't fixing the utilities. So therein lies part of the problem of putting together a street plan. Again, it's easy to see what streets need to be done, but then you have to take into account all the other little situations that are going on out there. As I say, I've got drawings of our sanitary sewers that need repairs. We have sanitary sewer lines that need repairs, and there's another one here of water lines that need to be addressed. All those are taken into account instead of just a street plan that's been put together, put together basically an infrastructure management plan to take into account all those items. A few years, or a few years, a few weeks ago, we had somebody step up to the podium here that says, "What streets are you going to do and when?" So that's what I've been trying to figure out, knowing when the income tax passes, how many dollars are coming with that, and then trying to meld those streets with all the other utility issues that are out there. So we put together... If you look at the large sheet that I handed out just minutes ago, that's very colorful. I've taken the 15 years and looked at how we can address our streets and our utility situation out there, taking into account the underground work. As you see, each color on the map is numbered, and that's the year as far as through the program of income tax, the funding of the street portion would come in, so you have an idea where we'd be. Yeah, the income tax starts with 2021, and that's the first year on here. So we looked at a way to put a plan together that's buildable, that's doable, without jumping all over town. If you look, all the colors, they're grouped together so that a program that would go in and take care of a neighborhood versus a street in one neighborhood and a street in another, that's make the basic constructions a dirty, dusty mess. That's very inconvenient. So trying to have all these inconveniences in a location to start with. So that's the plan that's come up. I'm in the process right now of trying to meld, gather all the financing issues that are necessary, that hopefully will have done within the next couple days, that talks about all the work that needs to be done and the dollars that we have available to do that, or we will need to do that. As far as the street end goes, I think it's very doable, but when you start putting in the underground parties in there as well, it starts taking some more thinking to figure it out a lot. But again, I believe this is a very doable program that gives us a lot more flexibility and a lot more control over what's going on. It should be noted, though, that the streets need to be kept up as well. A program such as this isn't just going in and reconstructing all the streets just because we need to reconstruct them. So there's some streets that need routine maintenance done to them that hasn't been done, cracked ceilings, stuff like that, which is also part of the program. So again, this program is put together with keeping in mind what kind of funding that would be necessary, again, with the income tax revenues, with the trying to get some dollars through our local tip program. Those would be three dollars for like Foreman and G and Bose, which has been done in the past and would be done in the future when we get to those as well. And again, the plan consists of a couple different parts to it. One is to be those streets that need underground construction. Those would be full reconstruction, those streets. I notice in the driving around, the street surfaces in many locations are just worn out. They're just well past their age, and they show, they're cracked, the surface is worn. Doesn't mean that the base is bad, it's just the surface is bad. So those streets that aren't getting underground, it's the surface that would be addressed in one manner or the other. Except we're taking just the surface asphalt off or milling it down, looking at ways to make sure the drainage is properly put back in there to keep the water off the roads, because the worst thing for roads is water. And that's where you'll see these roads that have been paved in the recent years as part of the programs, getting out the cracked ceiling each year, trying to make sure that those cracks are sealed, so the water can't get in here into the pavement and beneath, and start the pothole process, which speeds up the deterioration process. And then as we move along with the program, there's also thoughts of making sure we have the streets covered, not just trying to get them resurfaced, but then maintaining them as we move forward. There's a lot of different ways to do it. It's called a mix of fixes, if you will, if you've read about this type of work. Now, that's everything from, again, the sealing the cracks, maybe some light coatings of asphalt, micro-surfacing, just things to keep that surface intact as we move forward, so that they don't fall into the disrepair we see of them today. But what ends up happening with that is the public sees that there's still on a road that hasn't been touched, and we're also maintaining roads that maybe have been paved five, 10 years prior, and the question comes up, "Wait a minute, am I being left behind?" It's not that they're left behind, it's that we have to take care of them as we move forward, or else all the work we do just goes back to the disrepair. That's a part of the program that we're trying to also resolve as we move forward here, keeping this what we have in the best shape that we can.
Well, that's a part of the program that got us where we're at right now, too.
That is, and I think many, many communities could say the same things. Now, once it gets in there, we forget about it. It's like your house. You get your house, you get a roof on there, everything's fine. If you don't keep up on it, you know, it's full of holes and it's leaking. You have to do the maintenance, and that's part of a good street program or infrastructure program, if you will. It's kind of like, you know, with all infrastructure, we're out flushing hydrants, we're flushing out mains. We started that out today. That's all part of maintaining your water infrastructure. You go out, you jet out, you clean out, and you observe your sewer collection lines to make sure that they're all in good shape. That's just part of good maintenance, and we have to do the same with streets as we move forward. Again, we put together this program that, if you look, there's really only 12 years on there, because it still needs to be financed to for those last three years. And again, it's the dollar amount that's going to affect that more than anything on paper. But as we move forward, a program is only as good as what it is at that time. We have to keep reviewing it, evaluating it, adjusting it. There's so many variables out there that are out of our control that we need to keep cognizant of as we move forward, things such as cost, unforeseen situations that pop up, other utilities that are causing us grief. All those things need to be addressed as we move forward. And while our program looks great for today, for the 15 years, for all the streets in town, I guarantee you, it's going to change as we move forward. Right now, I feel very comfortable and confident with year one, which would be over in the Amity, Lincoln Lake area. There's a water sewer line work that needs to be done, more expensive than I thought when I put the plan together. Year two is Monroe. That's year two because of tip money that we are beginning to be getting for this street out here. Again, there's a large amount of underground work that needs to be done going up Monroe. And as you look on there, Monroe's in yellow, Lafayette, and all those little side streets were incorporated into a program, trying to clear the neighborhood, so that when we're done, we don't have to keep going back there. One of the nice things about doing it that way as well is it's the next street over, Washington, is in very bad disrepair as well, but there's also infrastructure network that needs to be done on there. When they're building a new road, you can kind of control of your contractor and make them use the old roads and tear them up worse, instead of doing like Jefferson or things of that nature as we move forward. So that's another good way, I think, of looking through doing this. Year three, Valley Vista area, and that is comfortable. We're confident that we get that in the third year. Again, I got to look at the numbers a little bit more. One thing we did talk, Mike and I, and Dave Austin from Williams Works talked about, was year 2020, next year. What can we get done to start the program? And one of the discussions we had was, again, since August, I really have, I see it, but I'm not really cognizant of, aware of how the community's working. But one of the issues that was brought to my attention is traffic pattern of taking Amity up to Suffolk and then zipping over to Lincoln Lake up to Foreman, trying to get through town to avoid the congestion downtown, is trying to look at, trying to get something more done in Amity to get that smoothed out. But because of the underground portion of it, and how those that goes hand in hand with the side streets on the south end, we're contemplating just redoing, do maybe a surface part of the program, if council so chooses, to just mill or remove the asphalt overlay Amity from Spring up towards Foreman there, just to get that portion done in year one or year sub-one, and then year one, 2021, do the other few blocks that are left afterwards. That'd be another discussion, but just a way that we looked at trying to get the program going quicker, if we can come up with the funds and the timing to do that. So that was the program I put together to start with for our infrastructure program, if you will. Just a couple of final notes I want to point out. Again, this is based on a large funding source. If the large funding source doesn't come through, we're still going to have a plan put together, but it'd be less, but it'd still be a plan. We can start working on the roads. One of the things that, well, it's not a requirement, it's highly, highly suggested we do, is have a street asset management program specific to the state of Michigan for their review and approval. That opens up some of our funding that we have coming in for major and local streets, where we can share the dollars across those two areas easier with an approved plan versus not a plan. So that we still finalize the plan in some way through council and get that out to them. Another thing would be is contacting all the underground and above-ground public, quasi-public utilities out there, and letting them know of our plan, and having them come in and do what they need to do with their utilities before we do our street. Last thing I want to see, and anybody wants to see, is get street paved and have another contractor come in to dig it up. That's just so frustrating. So that would be another avenue that we would be pursuing, is making sure they're aware of our plan, and they're ahead of us with their utility upgrades if needed, so that they're not having to dig up our streets. And then, again, we'd also talk with M.D.O., with Main Street through town and the county, with Hudson through town, making sure that they're keeping up the streets to the standards that we're going to be doing our roads with, with their funding. But they're still, it's in our community. We want to make sure our system stays up to the best ability that it can be. So, that's the plan I have at the moment. That's the plan we're going to be presenting on Wednesday. Again, there's still a lot of numbers that need to be crunched on this to keep up with all the available funding plus the work that's necessary, so.
Any questions?
Dan, South Broadway, you had that as yellow for 2022 reconstruct. We just did that.
Right, that would be, again, it's not, this isn't a plan saying we're reconstructing streets. This is a plan saying those are the streets we're going to address in a manner of mix of fixes, if you will. That street, we make sure it's sealed, cracked seals, taken care of, all the cracks sealed up. Again, it's heavily traveled with trucks. I expect that next year, we're going to see a couple cracks go in there, and the year after, we want to make sure they get sealed up, so that they don't start deteriorating. Same with, if you look, 2021, we have a purple line there for Jefferson, and that was paved just recently. Again, we want to just make sure we have something nice, we want to keep it nice. We're not going to just let it just go into disrepair. So that's those two years. And then, as this plan evolves, you'll see more of that.
Just something so the council's aware. Obviously, if the income tax doesn't pass, we're going to, as Dan mentioned, we're going to try and get our street asset management plan approved, where we can mix our Act 51 funds. We'll have about, if we continue to make $180,000 balance transfer from the general fund to the local street fund, we'll have with our Act 51 funds, we'll have about $325,000 a year for the next 10 years. Doesn't get you very far, but you can start fixing some things with that, which right now, we can't even, we can't even do that today, because we don't have our asset management plan, so.
There's might be more questions for Dave, but you're talking about Amity and Foreman and those streets up there for this year coming up, 2020, or fiscal?
Fiscal.
Okay, because my concern would be doing that at any time during the school year.
Well, those are all things that would have to be dealt out and figured out and scheduled appropriately. Those are all just still thoughts that would have to be, and that becomes one of the issues with, hey, there's a way today, go do it. It just doesn't happen that way.
Right.
It all has to be planned out, designed out, and make sure we have all those answers and all those angles covered, because you're like, you can't ever do this.
No, I'm over there, and you can't go anywhere from seven to nine, or from 2:30 to 3:30.
And that was one of the reasons that I had mentioned to Dan, that that area gets a lot of traffic, serving the schools and the industries, and it's kind of the backdoor to that part of town. We did apply for a Category B grant on that earlier that was not awarded to the city. But like you said, there's so many places that you can start, so that's just one option that you can work with.
Well, thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dan. Any other questions?
Not the name of it, for Mike. Are we, if this doesn't pass, are we already looking at applying for grants constantly, so that...
Yeah, the only thing is, there's only so many roads that we can, that are eligible for grants. We thought Amity might have been technically, Amity's a local street. It's not a major street. Major streets tend to have better opportunities for funding than local streets, and most of our systems, local streets. So, we've sought funding for Monroe. Monroe's, we're trying to get funding for the small urban program for 2022 for Monroe. The only other streets that we really can go seek funding for are Jefferson, Foreman, G, and Bose. The rest of them, the state doesn't have programs for those, and you go do the feds. So, that's part of the dilemma that we have. I mean, we're always trying to keep, you know, with Monroe, we try and get, we're trying to get that one funded now, but that's really all we can do, because it's, really, it's all available to us.
I'll make sure you guys too get copies of these drafts, post them, yell at us about them. Item E, Unity Schools PUD Review. Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
Michael?
Yep, let me just scroll around a little. At the September 3, 2019 city council meeting, city council directed city administration to prepare an ordinance to approve the plan unit development agreement with Unity Schools investors. We were directed to prepare language in the ordinance with two modifications from the original conditions recommended from the planning commission at their August 12, 2019 meeting and resolution. Those modifications were the following. Remove recommendation J from the planning commission's resolution requiring 18 spaces located on the property to be dedicated to parking for the proposed PUD and de-restrict those spaces. Council removed that. Also, we did add a new provision to the ordinance stating that the applicant shall install a curb gutter and sidewalk along the south side of the development, along the north side of High Street, but outside of the High Street right of way. There shall be no curb cuts on the north side of High Street. We've taken that information, and city attorney and Andy Moore, they prepared an ordinance in front of you tonight to take action on, and we should, we've met the requirements requested by the council.
And everybody got a chance to look that over and read it, everybody on the council?
Mike?
Go ahead, yeah, sorry.
Just one comment. The item that was added, the new provision J, the requirement, I believe, was that that would be completed as a part of phase one?
Yes. All right, well, I'm glad. I appreciate all the planning commission's work on this, and Bruce Delarty, and whoever else, and all the councils work on it, so I'll make the motion that we approve Unity School investors' PUD.
I'll support.
Any other questions from Mike or Dan? Sue?
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeWor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Salswiel?
Yes.
All right. I don't see public use, or sorry, I'm gonna open a public hearing for discussion on the adult use marijuana ordinance.
Let me get that out first.
Glad we don't break these anymore.
In your package, I just provide the ordinances and the maps, so you can all.
Okay. Any public comment on marijuana ordinance?
Brad Lozen, closer friends, I come from Greenville. They had an issue with the section that deals with marijuana cultivation and specifically the prohibition of HID lighting, but not understanding why that's in there as HID lighting is an industry standard when it comes to cultivating cannabis. So to outright prohibit an industry standard is to make a very unreasonable restriction in this ordinance. I'm not sure if this is coming from a safety standpoint or something along those lines, but if that's the case, then I would like to see that either removed or applied to every business that is within the zones that allow for the cultivation of marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can get an answer.
Yeah, I don't know that eliminating industry standard puts us in very good. I don't, I think we're just doing more to limit that, I guess.
Art, do you have any idea why that's in there?
I don't, I don't remember ever sitting down planning, talking about, like, I mean, you guys are there all the time. I just, I, I just, I don't know how or why it would have been in there. I know we didn't talk about lighting in any way, shape or form.
Well, there's lighting on the outside, but I didn't say anything about lighting on the inside.
Right. But the lighting on the outside would be, you know, your standard wall tags.
Right.
So many of them.
Let us get you an answer on that. We'll get an answer. Appreciate it. Any other comment? Council comments? All right. Now we will close the public hearing for adult use marijuana ordinance. Get us into that.
Yeah. At our next meeting, we can, obviously, we'll get the answer to that question for the next meeting, but would we, at the next meeting, be comfortable with the ordinances as they are now to at least vote on for the next meeting? Or do you want us to make any other modifications than what we've already discussed already because we can have that for the next meeting?
Well, if that's in there and it didn't get talked about, now I'm concerned that there's other stuff in there that didn't get discussed. And now I would like to spend more time going through it, but that's just my personal opinion. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Yeah, I'd like to know how that got in there. I don't know if it's a standard and you pulled up somewhere and applied in. I don't know.
Let's revisit it.
I too. Can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, please.
Jessica, dear?
Hi, Jessica Dickinson. My back girl Nancy wanted to get up here. So, so yeah, that's actually in a lot of different ordinances across the state, but I do think it's worth discussing. So that, and then there's another issue that came up today with some potential applicants that I would like to discuss with you.
Can you tell us where it is in our ordinance? Because don't we have the ordinance sitting here? Or don't?
Um, I don't know specifically what part you were talking about.
It's in the regulatory part and it's not in the ordinances?
It's in the, it's in the draft ordinance for the regulatory. It's not the page, it's a page, 114 in the package, 21 is a regulatory ordinance.
11 or 21?
21, sorry.
Do you have any idea why it's allowed or not allowing other?
Just, um, just different communities have different levels of restrictions and we saw several that would like this in terms of lighting. But that's not to say that you need to be, you know, following that standard. So if you want to get more insight from people, that's absolutely fine.
I'm assuming this is indoors, correct? So it's not just for anybody's. It's just the most efficient way of doing what you're doing.
I don't want to get the best spectrum.
Is there a heat, heating difference in the lighting versus what's saying we can't have here and what can be? You don't want to talk about, do they put different?
Steve has a comment.
Uh, this was, they're spining this out in the western states that already had it. I had, I didn't know what he was talking about at first, but California was when they were experiencing the brown outs from the energy draw. That's why they, I think this is why this was put in there. It's more energy efficient because light and power would actually have to divert resources of energy to supply all these lights during the summer months. And I think that's why it was put in there.
Uh, if I may, our substation right now does have sufficient ample capacity for increased demand and load here as well as all of our circuits. And we do have a demand component in many of our rates to recover a lot of these costs. So I don't have any concern in terms of low light power not being able to meet that load if it's just from an electric capacity standpoint.
I would imagine like California's different with 250 of them on every corner and we're talking about a few A and B.
Can I ask the gentleman a question?
Please do.
I'm, I'm reading it. It says the use of lighting for indoor cultivation shall be limited to LEDs, compact fluorescents, or other fluorescent lighting. Are any of those lights typically used in a grow facility?
They are, but they're not at heel.
Okay.
The HID lighting, specifically when you are trying to flower the plant, it just puts out more intensity and it's, you know, it's just what's been used for a long time. I mean, anybody that's within city limits that's growing medical marijuana is using these sort of lights as we speak. So, and I would say a combination of everything in there, you know, and the things that are prohibited and just it's seen arbitrary to what is allowed. And one of the newest HID lightings that they have out is also ceramic metal halide, and that's not listed on here. That's one of the biggest.
It is, it is listed as a prohibited.
Oh, ceramic MH.
MH, yes, ceramic MH, sodium vapor. That was your only concern, Steve, was using too much power?
I didn't have any concerns over it at all. I just, that's, I was trying to figure out what he was talking about, but I heard about this through one of my colleagues on one of the police listserv. So I believe that's what he, why they probably put that prohibition in there.
Okay.
But if he says they can handle it, I guess they can handle it.
He likes to sell power.
All right. I will make sure you guys have your answer. Everybody has their answer.
Do we want to just take that out or?
There's, there's actually, there's some other issues that came up today, just people asking questions that I think you need to discuss. So.
Okay. We're not done.
Right. You're not quite done. You're close.
And that prepared for the next meeting. We'll go over all the issues and.
Sure.
Get some light answers.
Sure.
Jessica, can you yell at us for a little while too? All right. New business, item A is the treatment plant digester number three lid.
In the current fiscal year budget, $68,000 was budgeted in the wastewater fund to repair the lid to digester number three at the wastewater treatment plant. This lid has not been repaired since the wastewater treatment plant was built and is in need of an upgrade. Suez can provide this work under the maintenance clause of their current agreement with the city and does not go unforbidden. They have given us a proposal of completing the work for $60,000. There is also a need for some engineering inspection work to ensure the repairs are made properly, and we received a quote from Williamson Works and Tryon New Hawk. Williamson Works had a lower quote of $1,440. I've attached the proposals that were submitted. Brian from Suez is here tonight to answer any questions you might have about the work. And I recommend the Lowell City Council approve Suez and Williamson Works to proceed with their proposed work to repair digester number three at the wastewater treatment plant and a cost not to exceed $61,440.
He brought this to us when we were preparing the budget. It was part of the plan of what we were gonna be.
This was in.
Yeah. It hasn't been done yet, right, today?
No, nope. It's, it's in rush state.
Anybody have any questions for, on the stand up there?
You can fix that and still maintain full operation, right? All the same time?
Yeah. What it is, is there is hollow core blanking, which we can't see right now, but we're assuming from, from what level we can see, that still wants to attack. What we're gonna do is remove the grounding and part of that layer that's kind of coating it and replace that. The anticipation is the hollow core blanking will stay intact and therefore, yeah, there's, there's not any disruption to use of the tank itself.
And if it's not intact?
Then it's gonna be reevaluate and, and see what needs to be done instead. That would be either change order or something. Basically, we'll stop and recomplete, see what needs to be done next.
But you can figure that out pretty quick.
Yeah. I'm, I'm thinking the tear off of the old grounding, couple of days worth probably. So, once we get that off, Williamson Works will be there to take a look at planking and they'll make the call on that.
That's the only time you can really make the true assessment of the planking is, once it's all torn apart.
It's a closed tank, which is typically full. So get in it, you gotta drain the whole thing. Even then, you're only seeing the underside. Doesn't really tell you what's happening on top. So the fiberglass and the grounding needs to be replaced either way.
So Brian, you and your crew are doing this? It's not a subcontract you're bringing in?
Nope. We've got a mechanical services group, electricians, guys that do concrete, guys that do steel work and everything. They'll be doing the brunt of the work. You know, if Cody and I need to help out, we'll be there basically for free at that point because we're already paid to be there. So it should be a pretty straightforward job.
Cool. Any other questions from Brian? We'll look for that motion now.
I'll make the motion that we approve, we approve the wastewater treatment plant repaired, digester number three not to exceed $61,440.
What's more?
Discussion. Sue?
Councilmember Campio?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salswiel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes. All right. More wastewater stuff. Plant expansion, something like.
Currently, we are near approaching our 80% capacity for the wastewater treatment plant. Once we are over the 80% level, we are required by Eagle, Michigan Environmental Great Lakes and Energy, begin planning for expansion. While we are currently finishing up our assessment from the Stormwater Asset Management Program, the SOAR grant, we are hoping many of the recommendations being made through SOAR will allow us to avoid having to conduct a plant expansion. That being said, Lowell Township, which currently owns 18% capacity in our system, is continuing to grow at a much faster pace in the city. In addition, Lighthouse is now delivering process water to the wastewater treatment plant after two-year hiatus. Now would be a good time to complete the necessary study to determine what upgrades to the facility would be needed. In the current fiscal year, the city budget funds in the wastewater fund for the wastewater plant study. I received an estimate from Williamson Works of $13,000 to complete the study. Additionally, Lowell Township has agreed to pay for 50% of the cost for the study as they are a partner in this and in future ventures possibly. I recommend in the Lowell City Council approve the provided estimate of a cost not to exceed $13,000, $6,500 which will be paid by Lowell Township for an expansion study of the wastewater treatment plant.
All right. Any questions from Link on that one?
Hey, how long does that study take, Mike?
Steve could probably answer that question better.
I'm reading from the script. It was not the author of the proposal, but I think it was 10 to 14 weeks.
Sounds all right.
Yeah. Brandon Muir is from our office and Steve Williams, semi-retired old guy who'd be working on it. Brian?
Question, Lighthouse is now bringing process water. Is that at the level that it was expected to be or is this, are we 25% in? Where are we in that process?
Brian, can you come up and answer that?
Should have never wanted to back down.
I got an update from them a couple of weeks ago and they're, I'm gonna say they're about 50%. They, they've been running one piece of equipment that they had two of and they were supposed to be in the past couple of weeks, starting out the second one. The reports from them, the numbers are the same, so I'm not entirely sure they have. They were just giving me the heads up that that's what they wanted to do. So they're at 50% of what they're gonna send me at this point.
Are those pieces of equipment at Channel Street?
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're the two pieces, two of the few pieces that they purchased.
So we're getting close to being where we want to be in that.
They're making progress. They're getting there. They're taking the time, but I think it's because they're trying to do things right.
I haven't heard of no complaints, didn't even know it was running, so that's good news.
That is good news.
They probably run almost for about four, five months?
Beginning of May, I think.
And four months.
Yeah. We have a con cellar months too, so.
Yeah.
I look right over there, so you be sure I'll give you the first to complain.
I've, I've been in the facility. It doesn't smell too bad in there. So it really shouldn't, you shouldn't be noticing anything outside.
Brian, if they go up to 50%, what does that put our 80% at then? If we're at 80% today, they're gonna give you another 50%. Does that?
We're, we're not necessarily at 80% right now. It's, there's a lot of different components to look at. Certain things are 80%, certain things aren't. So this will, once they're full capacity, that'll push us over to 80%.
Any other questions, Brian? I will let you go for real. It's a real thing. I'll look for that expansion study proposal motion.
Cost support, that motion?
Hope you need to make it.
Oh, I thought you did. Oh.
I'd make a motion that the city council approve the provided estimate of a cost not to exceed $13,000, $6,500 to be paid by Lowell Township for an expansion study of the